Mayor, this is the CA, Count Six of Council online here. And it's seven o'clock straight up.
Thank you. My apologies, I'm trying to get back to the screen here. I'm assuming you can see me?
Yes.
Okay, so for some reason, I can't find the... Hold on, there it is, got it. It's hiding behind too many things. All right, everyone, welcome. Glad you're here on this nice, warm day, I guess it is. October 1st, 2020, council meeting, 7:00 PM. The City of Oak Ridge held via Zoom and also in person at the Willamette Activity Center. This meeting is hereby called to order. Brian, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Ma'am. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free of bounds.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Trudy, for the flag, I saw it. Thumbs up. Okay. Jackie, will you do the roll call for us, please?
Unless she's on one of these telephones, I don't see her, so I guess I'll go ahead with it, if it's okay.
Sure.
Councillor Whitney?
Here.
Mayor Holston?
Here.
Councillor Kenyon?
Here.
Councillor Hollitt?
Here.
Councillor McClellan?
Here.
Councillor Forkham?
Here.
That's six, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda. It looks... I don't have any additions or corrections or adjustments. I do... Well, yes, I do, actually. And I will do it in Mayor's comments, but I also want us during the business of the City Council to add posting or discussion of posting for the empty seat on Council. With your approval. Is there any other additions, corrections, or adjustments from Council?
I have one, ma'am.
Go ahead, Don.
Well, I have several things I want to talk about, but a lot of them could be done in Council comments.
Okay.
The one I'd for sure... One I'd like to add to the agenda is a discussion about the levy.
Okay, let's do that, under Council comments, then. Number seven, 7.1, and then 7.2 will be the discussion of the empty chair on Council.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any others?
Um, I think there was a letter of support that needed.
I was gonna mention that, Mayor.
Oh, yes.
10.3, letter of support for Veterans Benefit, Councillor Grant for AlcoG.
Will do, 10.3, letter of support.
And I'd like to please defer 12.4 to the next meeting, which is a schedule of fees, not quite ready yet.
Okay, 12.4 is deferred until the next meeting. Anything else for adjustments? Good. Councillor Hollitt, are you... Are you there and are you able to communicate well?
I'm here. Sorry, yesterday I had a doctor's appointment and I was in Eugene for multiple things, and it just wasn't working.
It was interesting. I'm glad you're here and I'm glad you'll be able to participate fully. All right, so let's move down on into public comment. Let's start with those individuals who may be at their WAC. Is there anybody at the WAC who wants to do public comment?
Yes, ma'am, one sec.
Hello, I'm Larry Sweet, I live at 76361 Jones Road, Oak Ridge, Oregon.
Um, Larry?
Speak up, we can't hear you.
Yeah, Larry, I'm going to ask you first to speak up, and then I'm going to also remind you that as a candidate, while I appreciate your voice at all times, please make sure that your comments are directed toward agenda items or specific topics, and we are not going to do any campaigning. Go ahead, Larry.
Do a sound check first.
Sound check?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
I'm Larry Sweet, I live at 76361 Jones Road, Oak Ridge, Oregon. I come to this with a question from the citizens I'm being asked, okay? The levy, concerning the levy. Will this money really be used for the fire, police, and EMS? That's a question they're asking me before they vote yes or no. I'm asking this to the Council, to the Mayor, and to the Administrator on behalf of the citizens.
Thank you very much, Larry, and we will take that up during our discussion of the levy during Council comments.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else at the WAC who wants to make any public comment?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay. Is there any public comment for anyone that has dialed in to watch and listen up to us? If so, go ahead and unmute yourself and speak up. Audie?
Yes.
That's the number there. Okay, Audie, I will... I will give you the same spiel that I gave to Larry. We appreciate that you are a candidate. Please use this time to speak in public comment on, of course, anything you want, but refrain from campaigning.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Audie.
Uh, how do I mute this?
I can hear you.
How do I mute it? I'm on my telephone.
Oh. Go ahead.
You wanna mute yourself, Audie?
Yeah, if... Yep, you know, until I'm ready to go.
Okay.
So, Audie, yeah, you need to just turn your phone all the way down or put it on silent mode? I don't know what kind of phone you have.
Okay, can I hear you?
Sometimes the button kinda grays out, you have it.
If I'm on silent, can I still hear you?
I can hear you, I... I believe so, I don't know how... What mechanisms you're using? It looks like you're using just your phone or the computer, too?
I'm on the Apple phone.
Oh, okay. I can hear you just fine. Yes.
Just wanna get muted, I can... Audie, but if you wanna make a comment, I can't do that.
Okay, I... I will just turn my volume down.
Okay.
But I won't be able to listen to you guys, so...
Well, I would suggest that you go ahead and use your three minutes, and then you can turn it back up if we have anything to say after your comments.
Okay, I haven't got anything to say right now.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, that's fine, then. Is there any other comments from anyone who has dialed in?
Trudy Hammond has her hand up, Mayor.
Awesome, Trudy, go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you, I finally remembered where the access button was to raise that hand, that blue hand. I was wondering if anybody had come up with a name for the new disc golf course yet? I mean, the park? Where it's at, if anybody had thought of a name yet?
Um, I... We will definitely pose that to Council during Council comments. I haven't heard of anyone or no one's sent any suggestions into me. So, we will bring that up during Council comments, Trudy. Okay, and can... Does the... Can the community, like, email in as suggestion? Well, that was one of the things that we wanted to talk about and see. I certainly don't see why not, but we will definitely talk about that during Council comments and throw that ball around.
Okay. Now, do I need to click that blue hand again to make it go away so I don't get called again?
I took care of it, don't worry about it.
Oh.
Oh, no, there it went again. Oh, there, I got it.
Got it?
Yeah.
Excellent. Is there anybody else who wanted to make a comment? Okay, let's move on, then. We're gonna move on to Mayor's comments, and I have just a few here. Let me get my book here. Okay, so I want to hold on that. I think I can do this. Can I share my screen, Brian?
Yeah, I opened that up, so you should be able to share it.
Okay. It'd be a good test for all of this. There you go. Anyway, so can you see my screen, guys?
Let me stop sharing mine.
Okay. Can you see it now? No? Yes? No? Okay, well, we'll see if it pops up. We do wanna be able to do this when you get to executive session, so this is probably a good... A good test. So, what I'm sharing is, The Great Willamette Cleanup is... Is ready and looking for volunteers. I'm sure that some of you may have seen it on Facebook. It is October 10th. This is sponsored through Willamette River Keepers. There is two locations here in Oak Ridge, one in Oak Ridge, one in Westford. It... Westford's is at the portal, that's where everyone will meet. Oak Ridge is at Green Waters, and you're welcome to... To join them. If you would go online to Willamette River Keepers or The Great Willamette Cleanup, you can sign up there and register. I encourage folks to do that. Also, the measure for the levy, and we'll bring it up... I could bring it up then. It now has a number, so you will be seeing signs that are popping up, I believe, and we'll have more discussion about that. The COVID, I just wanna remind everybody that we need to double down on our efforts. And... And although Oak Ridge is doing very well, we are doing very well. We will not be omitted if we have to go back to Phase 1. So, we definitely don't wanna do that. I encourage you all to double down on your efforts and make sure that we stay... Stay in the level that we are now and we can move forward. I talked to the County Commissioner, Heather Buck. She asked me, as well as all the other Mayors, to pass on the information that they're getting a little more looky-loos up McKenzie than they would like to have. And yes, while there are some of the roads are open, it is important that people who are not residents or working or in part of the emergency crews to stay away and respect those residents as they come back to their homes and... And search for what may or may not be left. So, if you could pass that around to friends and neighbors, I'd appreciate that. Also, we all know that we're facing an election here, and we have four people... Four seats to fill. Last year, when we had... Or the last time we had an election, I read this, and I'm going to reread it again. And I think it's helpful for both City Councilors as well as... As the community. This is written by a man who is a City Council member for six years and a Mayor for two years. And he put together some things to look for for good City Councilors. And I share this again because I got a lot of comments from it last time I read it, and I think it's well worth it. There is six points here, I believe. One is self-care. The Council work is uniquely difficult, and it's easy for elected officials to neglect themselves physically, emotionally, and relationally. Public life can be taxing, and one can't be effective and make good community decisions when self-care is absent. Sure that... Be sure... Sure, you wanna take care of your city, but make sure that the keyer candidates are willing to take care of themselves. Secondly, know-it-alls are not acceptable. There is an ego boost when elected that brings a misguided sense of, "I should know it all." Well, we don't. And six of the smartest words an elected official can use are, "I don't understand, can you help?" We call it teachability, openness, and a willingness to learn. A good Council member studies, listens, and is willing to have preconceived ideas challenged. He's open to staff, the public, even that Council member that he or she may dislike. He recognizes his own bias, her own prejudices, and your values. A smooth talker. An effective Council member communicates intelligently, articulately, and thoughtfully. She's able to persuade and change opinions without bullying or manipulating. He builds consensus and pulls a council together. He shows colleagues that... That he understands the issues and is able to logically explain how those decisions are made. Respect. More than just a little bit. An effective Council member is respectful, polite, and differential toward all fellow Council members, staff, and the public, regardless of likes, dislikes, friendships, and politics. He doesn't insult, he doesn't attack, and he doesn't demand. Is a good loser. Our true character emerges when things don't go our way. An effective public servant is emotionally and relationally mature and shows it when losing. He or she stays calm when a vote goes the wrong way. He or she respects voters and the process, even when he or she is on the minority side of a heartfelt issue. He remains statesman-like in defeat. Do you swear? An effective Council member puts the law, code, and citizens first, regardless of personal benefit or bias. He chooses to set aside preconceived ideas and personal likes and dislikes, and he consistently achieves the highest level of adherence to his oath of office. He respects state laws, city bylaws, council rules, and parliamentary... Parliamentary procedures. He knows when to recuse himself from the process to protect his integrity and the integrity of the Council. Pitchforks and torches. A good Council member emerges when she votes for something she knows is in the best interests of the city while public outcry demands the opposite. Some of the most important decisions an elected official makes may be counter to a barrage of angry emails and public comment. A good Council member also recognizes that an angry mob does not necessarily reflect the view of a quiet majority. She knows that a flood of emails does not necessarily confirm public opinion in general and makes her decisions based on merit and not emotion. A separation of powers. An effective Council member respects the role and the function of the public, the City staff, and the City's executive. Most Council, Mayor, staff problems occur when those boundaries are not honored, and he knows the limits of his authority. High personal standards and codes of ethics. An effective Council member doesn't embarrass fellow colleagues with inappropriate conduct or activities. She exercises personal self-discipline to never bring dishonor to the office. Picks up the phone. He responds to citizens politely and promptly and remembers that they are the boss. He values their contributions, their comments, and their concerns, and he responds accordingly. Thank you for giving me the time to do that and read that. I hope it is helpful for everyone. Let me make sure I've gone through everything that I need to. Also, I have one more thing to read. Council... Councillor Maxfield, as you know, has resigned because she is no longer here in the community and sent a letter of resignation, which she asked me to read to everybody. Hold on. Let me get my phone going here. There it is, "To my fellow councilors and the residents of Oak Ridge, it is with a heavy heart that I resign my seat as an Oak Ridge City Councilwoman. I want to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to serve our community in such an important leadership role. I've learned so much over the last couple of years and will take several case studies with me as I start my dual masters in conflict resolution and strategic communications at the University of Oregon. When I first started as a City Councilwoman, I underestimated how much I would need to give in order to serve my community, not only in time, but also in emotional investments. With my time as a Councilwoman, I did the best I could to lead the Administrative Advisory Committee, to be an informed participant on the Budget Committee, and to show up ready to discuss at our standard Council meetings. I am proud to say I have given over 350 volunteer hours to our community and to the City of Oak Ridge. There were times when... Where I questioned my ability to show up for our community as I was also trying to balance my career, my personal life, and my mental health. For that reason, I want to take a moment to thank everyone who has shown me grace and patience while I navigated what I meant to be a leader in my small rural hometown. I will always do my best to represent Oak Ridge in all the work that I do and to share our story with those who are unfamiliar. I look forward to the progress Oak Ridge can and will make as a community with all my best, Councillor Maxfield." And with that, I am through Council. Do you have any comments or announcements?
Yes, I just wanted to say publicly that I think Councillor Trish Maxfield, for all the work that she's put in, and I personally got to see a lot of that firsthand, and I can definitely say that she never approached anything, you know, halfway. She definitely put her whole heart into it, and that's something that's really difficult to do. So, thank you.
Agreed. Thank you, Councillor Hollitt. Go ahead, Councillor Kenyon, I overs... Spoke over you.
Oh, that's okay. I just wanted to also say thank you to Trish. I don't know if she's on tonight, but I'll send her a private message. I do...
Yes.
I did appreciate working with her the whole... Whole way through.
Wonderful. I agree. I don't believe she is on, so please do extend your... Your... Congratulations for moving on and sorrow.
Right. I did have a few things I wanted to bring up during the Council comments. Is that where we are at right now?
That is where we are at. Please go ahead, Councillor Kenyon.
Okay. One, I wanted to find out if the Planning Commission seat is advertised. I didn't see it on the City website. And then, number two, I wondered where we're at on the Airbnb information that was being looked into. And then the third one is, I wondered on the TSP, now that it's completed, when can we expect to see the ordinances updated to match the new TSP and be able to enforce the truck and traffic... Or the truck traffic issue on Hill Street? And then, number four is, I have had a couple of different citizens inquire about why our officers are responding or traveling outside the city at times. Their concern is that leaving the city unattended isn't appropriate when we're... We're low on police hours as it is. The... Oh, what?
Go ahead, I'll let you finish and then I'll respond.
Okay. The fifth one is, I've been asked about advertising our prices for city property on the website and wanted to also find out where we're at with the Realtor of Record. And then, um... Let me see if I can shorten this one. This is probably part of our strategic plan anyways, but I wondered if our Council could consider activating a review and revising ordinances process regarding building codes in the business districts. I've had a couple of business owners talk to me about the codes, making it cost prohibitive to do... To... To do design implements to their businesses. So, that could be at a future date that we could talk about that, but I wanted to get that, like, on the books.
Okay. Is there any more, Don?
No, the last one, we're gonna talk about the levy later on.
Okay. We've already scheduled that in. So, it looks like we have several of these. The Planning Commission, the Airbnbs, will let Brian answer. Officers responding outside at City Times will let Chief speak to that. Advertising prices for city, I think that comes in... Let's ask City Administrator to speak to that when he gives his update, because I know ODAK was looking at that, as well as Realtor of Record. So, the strategic plan... Let's... Oh, what... Let me go back to TSP. TSP, we still have to pass. So, that should... Let's find out from Brian when you have the opportunity, Brian, during your comments, letting us know where we are with those... That document so that we can actually ratify it, because we haven't done that yet. And then, in addition, ask when those changes can come. And as far as the strategic plan or activating a... A review regarding the business codes, let's definitely talk to Council. So, I think at this time, Council, on this one, is this something that Council would like to take up? So, Councillor Kenyon has suggested that Council look, and briefly, of course, because we don't do codes, but look at the issue that has been brought to her attention by a couple of different businesses of the difficulty of applying design codes to the... I'm assuming Uptown or just Uptown and entire community? Don?
These two happen to be both Uptown, but they also both assume the same codes might be affecting businesses on 58.
Okay, so, Council, is that something that you believe you would like to take up at a future meeting so that we can have a discussion and then give direction or not give direction? So, I am willing to see a show of hands. I see two thumbs, Paul, John, and Bobby, yes, go ahead.
We have design standards, and I'm sure that impacts...
Yes.
That.
Exactly.
I'm not quite sure. I just... I don't know. I understand that businesses... That things can get expensive. People have their own ideas, but we still have to stay within our design standards, so I'm not quite sure what they're looking for.
I think the opportunity to discuss that, and you're exactly right, Councillor Whitney, we do have a code that has design standards. So, I think the discussion will be, is whether or not the design standards are... Are reasonable, are current, as far as reflecting this year of 2020 and not maybe 1980, as... As well as making sure that they are not onerous at all. And we can have a general discussion about that and get informed as a Council and then determine whether or not we want to direct the City Administrator to bring that before the Planning Commission to look at it a little bit more in depth. So, does that make sense? Which is how we talk, discuss about it?
Um, yeah.
Okay. Great. That's great. Um, okay. Don, are you okay with what we've laid out? Yes. Who?
That was Chrissy. I just wanted to make sure that I got my vote in as yes. I definitely think we should put this on the table to discuss, and I agree with what you said 100%.
Thank you, Chrissy. Okay, so Brian, will you put that discussion on a future agenda for maybe, you know, within the next two or three times? As... As our needs allow?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Wonderful. Is there any other Council comments? Okay. I'm... I'm gonna move on, then. So, Business from the City Administrator. Brian, would you like to tackle some of the questions that were asked by Don, and I can run through them before you start in on yours? Or would you like to get one, two, and three taken care of and then do that?
Let me respond to what she has to say, and then I know you still have some more stuff left as far as the Council seat and the levy before it comes to the Administrator. So, I'll try to respond to her questions. Planning Commission, it was advertised on the City's Facebook site, and I don't... I think I may have neglected to put it on the City's website, but it is on the Facebook site, and I've had one signal of interest, but no follow-up. Airbnb is... No progress. I mean, I've got an idea in mind, but I just haven't had time to get to it. TSP, Dave Helton finished the two... Well, two or three changes that he discussed when he was with Council. Those have been given to the contractor. The contractor has now implemented them into the TSP. With any luck, the TSP will be before Council either on the 15th or the first one in November. How that would impact any enforcement on Hill Street, I don't know. The TSP is a strategic document, not an enforcement and ordinance. So, uh, police outside the city. And I'll let the Chief, if he has anything after me. But I'll tell you that we do have two contracts, one with Westford and one with Lowell, that require the police to go out. that require the police to go outside the city. It's, it's a contractual obligation, and so perhaps that's what they're seeing. There, there perhaps are some times when they will do a mutual aid assistance, either for OSP, for the Forest Service. So there are other reasons why they might see them outside the city. I guarantee you that they're still in connectivity with dispatch. And should something go down in the city, that is a priority for them. Let's see. Realtor of Record, right now, our Realtor of Record is our city attorney. He does it for cheaper, and, and he can, he's writing a contract right now, as a matter of fact, for an offer on Lot 34. I do, would like to have a commercial Realtor. And with the new rare participant, that's one of her first tasks is to work with Bee and, and see if we can find a commercial Realtor of Record. As you know, we, we asked once, put an RFQ out, and there were no responses. So it's more of a matter of going to hunt them down and asking them if they want the business. And as part of that, part two of the rare participant, she is going to look at revising the sheet we have on the OIP as well as the identified properties within the city that we want to sell and make that public knowledge. Part of that is going to be advertising on the Oregon Prospector, which is a state-run commercial venue for advertising properties. So she's going to develop that relationship with the Oregon Prospector and get us a count there. And as far as, I guess we're gonna, we'll hold off on, I'll hold off any comments on the building code in the commercial district, but as you're, as we're waiting for that, it'd be great to get some more fidelity as to the real questions you're hearing from the citizens and maybe some specifics, because code is two parts of it. One is the design standards for appearances. The other is their safety issues. So, you know, there's some things you cannot waive, and there are others that you can look at. So, so I think that addresses what you had on the list, and if not, I can address it in the city administrator timeframe.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Canyon, yes, go ahead.
One is on the officers outside of city limits. They were actually more way outside, like Box Canyon, up Hills Creek Reservoir and up East 58 quite a ways. Then the other thing I wanted to mention was that the, the TSP thing, I apologize, I had it in my head that we were done with that. But the ordinances that are going to be updated through, you know, us adopting the TSP are going to affect the, Chief Martin has actually told us in the past that the reason he can't enforce having trucks, trucks not go on Hill Street is because our ordinances weren't up to date. So that's why I'm bringing this up. Once they get, I've, I've read through the TSP ordinance proposals, and it looks like that that would bring us up to date for our officers to enforce that. So that's where I'm going. I'm wondering, I have citizens inquiring, so I wanted to know when we would be able to start enforcing that.
Okay.
And I will email you, Brian, about what, about regarding the,
we lost it on.
Sorry, I'm done.
Okay.
Okay, and Chief Martin, either tonight or by email can respond to the Box Canyon sighting of a police officer.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Let's go back to, so we're going to talk about two different things. Let's talk about the levy. And so we now have a number for that levy. Councilor Hollitt, I believe you indicated you were going to look at getting some signs made. Did we had any, I know because of the fires and everything, as you explained, we've had some difficulty with, you know, the union because they're assigned elsewhere. Is, had you have any updates on that part of it?
I hope to have our group together early next week. I did send out, you know, really mass email to all the parties involved, and I'm working on, basically, I did hear from the fire union that they will purchase signs, campaign signs, and then things like door hangers and things like that. There is funding, and I didn't talk specifics with the police union, but I do know that they have also said that they will be putting in assistance as well with those kind of things. So I do think it'll be an equal hand kind of thing. Kathy, can you share a little bit what we talked about, the part about counselors being involved? And how that relates to serial meetings? Or I guess what I'm saying is that it's not considered a serial meeting, because I am kind of hoping that counselors that are interested in attending our meeting next week, when I have a final date, are available to. But I just, I can't remember what the, what the advice was from the attorney.
Yeah, so, so we are able to, as counselors, participate in, in canvassing for this levy and actively doing that. Of course, our city administrator cannot, and any employee of the city cannot, is if they're on duty. And they, they need to refrain from that. Our city administrator and staff can assist us in ways such as printing and copying or proofing and things like that, what their normal duties would be. As counselors, we can gather together with others as long as we post the fact that there may be a forum at a meeting and the purpose of the meeting. They are not, they, they do not become a open, public meeting. It just is a notice that, that we are having this meeting. So, you know, it's, as long as we stick, as long as counselors, as we stick to the conversation of how we move the levy forward, explain it to the citizens, what we want to do as far as advertising, and don't move into the arena of, oh, my gosh, what happens if it doesn't pass? Because then that is more of a decision-making thing. Then we can participate together and work together to get the levy passed. So does that, that make sense to everybody? Okay, good, good. So, so there were some questions, and excuse me for looking a little frustrated here because I'm trying to look through my notebook, Larry, and because I wanted directly respond to you. I am trying to gather together a list, I have all that here, a list of mailing addresses. Brian is helping me getting, get one from the county. I requested one from the state, and surprisingly enough, they are not very prompt. So although they promised that I could get a list of all registered voters in the, in the city of Oakridge, I have yet to see that yet. So, hold on.
Hey, Madam Mayor, you can get that, that registered list of the voters from Lane County.
Yeah, we're picking up.
And that's what Brian's doing for me.
We're picking up a thumb drive on Monday, and I'll have the, have the list.
Okay. So Larry, I'm going to go ahead and read a few things, and as I read this, and, and I'm hoping that this answers questions. But if, if I haven't answered a specific question that you have in your mind, please feel free to, to, to ask me when I'm, when I'm done. So you're going to be receiving in the mail, everyone, a letter about the levy. And one of the questions, Larry, that you asked was, how do we know this, this money is going to go specifically for the fire? And EMS and, and our public safety? And to answer that is that the wording of the levy is specific to that. It cannot be used for anything else. It can't go just into the general fund. It has to be kept aside, and it has to be used for that specific purpose, which we are required to do by law. And I have some information here about how much money we spend doing this or that, where, where your dollar goes, and you're going to be getting that information. I want to make sure that we assure the citizens that, that this is a levy that, that will get us through the next five years as we work diligently to create a situation where we can afford the services that we want to have and value in this community. And that means a lot of, of work, both on the city administrator's part, and then ultimately also with council in looking at how we can do that. And there isn't just one size fits all, and I'm sure Chrissy can, can, to speak to this also. There are, there is the proverbial more than one way to skin a cat. But we want to make sure that when we skin the cat, it's the way we want it done. The way this community believes is the best way, and what we can do that is sustainable. Because we cannot be left without these services, and, and I don't believe we should have any service less than what we have now. Audi, or no, I see Audi. I was talking Larry. Larry, are you still here?
One moment. He's going to come forward and.
Come on up, Larry.
Be, be recognized.
Yeah, so that, is that helpful? Is there something else specific that I can actually specifically answer?
Yeah, I can answer the question very well. Thank you for answering it. And thank you for answering for the citizens of Oakridge that were asking that question also.
You're welcome, Larry. So this letter I will post, Brian will post a letter on a website and on the city's Facebook page, and we will make it available so that counselors can post it on their pages if they have it. I see your hand on. Don't let me forget you. And, and then it will be mailed to all the registered voters, and it's a beginning. It's not, it's, it's not the end-all and be-all of communications. It's an opportunity for folks to look at it and, and either have more questions that pop into their heads or use it to answer questions that they have, because we want to make sure we're, we're clear and transparent. Dawn, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I wanted to ask whether or not the budget that we have will actually have some new lines in it that show how much is received from the levy? And also how much is for police and how much is for the, the fire slash EMS department? And how do, how are we going to determine the portions? Is it just 50/50?
Well, I can answer part of that, and then I think I'm going to defer to city administrator and Eric for the actual accounting and the way that goes. We won't know how that's going to be split until we determine what our plan is. So it would be premature to be able to say, oh, yeah, we're going to do 50/50 down the middle. We go 50 here, 50 there. Because recognizing that, that funds, funds, you know, sometimes you can use funds for something to offset this until we know what the plan is and how we're going to, how we're going to provide some sustainability to our, our services. I, I don't think we'll be able to answer that question. Brian and Eric, can you speak more to the money that comes in from the levy, from the increase? Will that be, will we be able to track that, or will that just go into the general, into the, the tax receipt lines that we get for property taxes?
No, it would be a separate, separate line item in the general fund, because that's really the only one that can take a revenue other than the enterprise fund. So it would be a separate line item, and then it would be a transfer into, whatever we apportion it, would be a transfer into the emergency services fund. And as you know, the police department is within the general fund, so they would get the remainder of whatever the portion of it was. But in the end, you know that we've been transferring and creating a deficit to pay for these. So what really happens is the deficit goes away, and for the first time in a long time, we have a balanced budget. Eric, do you have any to add to that?
Yeah, just to, you know, back up what you said, there definitely would be an account set up to receive all the revenue, and it'll be very clear, all the money leaving that account where it's going. And my understanding is the, the council sees all the expenditures, and so they're going to be looking at it. So, yeah, it'll all be very clear, very transparent.
And as I listened to Larry and his comments about citizens, you know, concerned that, how do we know? It really is a disciplined budget committee and a disciplined council and staff that makes sure that that happens, looking closely at the reports provided and doing the budget process with rigor and discipline.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
Are we still talking about the levy?
If you need to, yes.
Well, I think we, are we going to do that, or are we going to do it again later? There's a couple of concerns that I have that I don't think people will actually know what would happen if the levy doesn't pass. We need to focus on that part of it too, besides trying to get it to pass. But I mean, I do, I know everybody wants it to pass, but we gotta be realistic and let them know what happens if it doesn't pass.
Okay, Paul, I agree, I agree with you, and I think we kind of addressed that in, in this letter. So let me, let me just, there's just a short piece that says, what happens if the levy doesn't pass? If it doesn't pass, we have some very tough choices to make as a council. We will have to make cuts into the vital essential services. The city budget is available on our website. You can see exactly how much is budgeted for each department. I encourage you to take a look at your, look yourself and familiarize yourself with the costs of running a city. I agree with you. Maybe we should make sure that in our conversations with, with the community that we let them know that there will be drastic changes because we cannot run as, in a deficit. And we don't know exactly what those changes are going to be, I don't think. And I am open to comment from you, because we'll have to make that decision when we, we'll have to begin making those decisions for the future when we see whether or not the levy passes. Councilor Canyon, I see your hand.
Um, so I'm a little confused, because I think right before Paul brought that up a little bit ago, you mentioned that we can't really talk about what would happen if.
In the, in the committee, I'm sorry, in the committee meeting where we're, we're trying to get, get the levy passed, we can talk about it in council right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Not in the community meeting?
Not in the, no, we're not talking about a community meeting. We're talking about a, a, Chrissy, can you help me out? A committee, a committee put together to get to pass the levy. So this is a political action committee, just like.
I was talking about the campaign committee when I was talking about getting signs and stuff like that. I think what Councilor Forecombe is speaking to is what is the council going to put out as a public statement to the community?
Okay. Political Action Committee. Okay.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chrissy, for providing the right words. So, yeah, we need to make sure that that is, is part of the conversation. So Chrissy is arranging, getting signs arranged. She has said that she's going to be in contact with the union. She has put out feelers and requests to sit and meet together as far as what our next plans are. And I believe you said you would like to see as many counselors there as possible. So when you, when you get that date and time set, will you let us know? So that we can.
Yes, I definitely, yes, I definitely will.
Thank you, Chrissy. And, and I believe that, that letter, you know, that we approved is available for your use too as you talk to, talk to our citizens about, about what we're doing and why we're doing it. And don't hesitate, any counselor and citizens that are listening, you know, if you have questions, don't hesitate to send emails and ask them. Don't hesitate to pick up the phone and call City Hall. If you have questions of the city administrator, while he can't tell you to, to vote one way or the other, they can certainly. they can certainly answer questions about the budget. If you go in and look at it and you don't understand, you have some good resources. Brian is really good at it. Councillor Kenyon can really help you walk through the numbers also. She's very familiar with the format of the budget. I'm happy to help you also. And I would just really encourage everyone to be active about educating themselves. Not, I think we really need to help the community not to get into a maelstrom of what ifs, oh my gosh, he said, she said, whatever. And we can do that by providing information and providing accurate information. I guess I should preface that with accurate information, not false news, fake news, or whatever you want to call it. And do that. So any other discussion on levy that we need to talk about? Okay. Larry, since you brought this up, is there anything also, is there anything else you would like to say?
No, thank you for answering the question. I appreciate your time on that. And it was just concerns of the citizens here when they were looking at, you know, going into this levy situation.
All right. Thank you, Larry.
Where the money was going and whether it was going to actually go for those entities. Thank you.
Right. You're welcome. Let's move on to discussion about filling councillor Maxfield's seat. Typically, what we do is we post for 30 days when there is a vacancy, asking for applicants. After 30 days, at the next immediate council meeting, we would ask them to come in and then we would make a choice then, looking at the calendar. So if you have your calendars in front of you, if we post tomorrow for 30 days, that would go to November 2nd, is that right? November 2nd is a Monday. Our next meeting would be November 5th. Typically, what happens is that we meet twice in November, and that'll still work. Thanksgiving is the, oh, wait, Thanksgiving the 19th, guys? Are you looking at your calendars?
I think Thanksgiving is the 26th. Oh, maybe it is the 19th.
No, I've got it on the 26th.
Okay.
The fourth Thursday of the month. So we would meet on the 5th and the 19th. Typically, we only meet once in December. Although the way it's laid out, we could potentially meet the 3rd and the 17th, because that still leaves a full almost two weeks for people who travel. Although, I don't know what's happening this year, if anybody's going anywhere to be with family at Christmas or that type of thing. So my question to you is, do you want to post it? We have flexibility in this and not posting it and leaving just an empty seat. We have functioned as a council before with one empty seat for a couple of months, and we can do that again. Or post it and put someone in that seat for the next two, next, potentially four meetings. Well, they would get sworn in on the first one, so then there would be three meetings for them to attend before we swear in our new council in the first meeting in January. Councillor Kenyon, I see your hand.
So from the numbers that you just read, after 30 days is what, November 3rd, you said, or 2nd?
Monday, November 2nd would be 30 days, and then the next council meeting would be the 5th of November.
So all I'm thinking is, isn't the election right in there somewhere?
Well, the election doesn't impact our appointment.
Right. It just popped into my head that could we just appoint one of the people that get elected?
Which one of those would you choose? And how would you choose them?
That's a good point. I don't know.
I don't think we can do that. It either has to stay open or it has to be filled by-
Right.
By the election.
Well, by appointment. We will appoint somebody. And then that seat will be filled by whoever it is that is elected into that seat. So-
Yes, we can appoint. We tried that last time.
No, no, Paul, we can appoint. Councillor Forcombe, it is our duty as a council to appoint someone into an empty seat.
No, no, Madam Mayor, what I'm saying is we were trying to appoint somebody that was going to be elected before, and it doesn't work like that.
No, we've never done that. When have we ever done that? I just don't, I don't want council to have the impression that we've tried to do that and we failed.
No, we haven't tried to do it, but people thought we should do that because of, anyway, it doesn't matter.
Okay. All right, as long as we know we didn't do that. I don't want to be in trouble.
No, we did not.
I'm ready. What? As Mayor Holston went over this, I'm looking through the calendar myself. And I think at some meetings, we've appointed the councillor at the end of the meeting. Although I guess sometimes it's been at the beginning. So, you know, the way I look at it is that first meeting that whoever that person would be would essentially be sitting into something that they have no history in. And so at best, we're looking at three meetings, possibly even only two meetings if we don't do a second meeting in December. So I would say it would be, I kind of feel like we should just leave it open and wait till the first of the year to fill the seat with the new election process.
This is Bobby. That is what I was going to say as well. I just had my hand up for a while. I didn't want to interrupt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But no, I agree with Chrissy, and that was going to be my suggestion, that we just keep it open.
Okay, councillor, let's see, Muffellin, how do you feel about this?
I would agree. I think, you know, given the fact that it is probably just two meetings and the amount of time and effort it would take to do that would take away from other things that we could be getting done before then. So it seems like we have a lot of discussions with the levy. And then after the levy, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of discussions with that as well.
Okay, so it sounds like it is the general consensus of this council that we do not post for the open seat. Rather wait until the first meeting in January where we will appoint all newly elected councillors at that time. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
Okay. So I am actually going to make that a motion so that we have that in the record.
I will second your motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Do you have to say the motion?
Yes.
Or did you just?
No, you're right, Don. I need to say the motion, and I totally was aware of the fact that I was trying not to. Okay, so I move that we do not post the vacant council seat. Rather wait until the newly elected council is sworn in the first week of January 2021.
And councillor Hollitt seconds the motion.
Thank you, councillor Hollitt. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, please. Brian or Jackie, whoever's there.
I'm here.
Hi, Jackie.
Hi. Councillor Hollitt.
Hi.
Councillor Forcombe.
Go on.
Councillor Whitney.
Hi.
Councillor McClelland.
Hi.
Mayor Holston.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
Councillor Forcombe.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. Let's move on. I think we're done with councillor Thomas. Brian, business of the city administrator.
Okay, a couple of quick updates, and then Eric's got something for you, and then we can go into the business at hand. But I told you last session that the Imba Grant restroom construction was delayed due to the fires and the smoke and the contractor being unable to get out here. The new date is October 6th to begin the construction. And there is a contract between now and then that has to happen, so there might be a quick session to get that approved. I'll have to take a look at the contract and see exactly what it says. Also, in an effort to increase our code enforcement efforts, we're going to kick off a code of the month. So each month, I'll have the police focus on a particular aspect of the code. And it will be a friendly visit first and then kind of ramp it up a little bit. And for October, it's going to be noxious weeds. So it's noxious weed month. And with that, I'll hand it over to Eric, and let me get his screen share up so he can talk to it. Eric, we're, over to you.
Okay, I don't have a lot to talk about this week. The audit's going to be starting in a month, so I'm starting to get all this stuff ready for the auditors. But today, what I brought was, I just wanted to bring this pie chart that shows kind of the breakdown of where the revenue is coming from going into Oak Ridge. It's a little small for me to see, but the large blue area, I think, was the largest amount of revenue coming in, and that's labeled services, which is the water, wastewater. And then the next largest item was the property taxes, which is the orange piece. And then followed by the fees that we get for the ambulance service. And then, I'm not going to go through all the rest of that, but you guys can read it. I didn't know, you probably already know this, but I just, I like visual things like this. Help me to understand things a bit better. So that's all I had for tonight.
Brian, Eric, where does marijuana fall in there?
That one is sitting with the tax slash liquor, et cetera.
Et cetera.
Up near the top, which is only in the 1%.
Okay. Thank you. This is really helpful for me, because I too am a real visual person. And is this on someplace that we can access it? Or can you send it to us so we can use it? Because it's really helpful.
I'll post it to the city website and maybe create a budget page of some sort.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Just also, I'm really open to creating any kind of documents people want like this. So if anyone has suggestions, just email me, Brian, whatever, and I'll work at getting stuff together.
Can you scroll down just a little bit?
Yeah, let me work that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Nice. I appreciate it. Wonderful.
Can I ask a quick question, Kathy?
Yes, please do.
Can we keep everyone muted during the meeting except for whoever's talking? There's been a lot of background noise that makes it hard for me to hear who's speaking.
Sure.
Like noise in people's homes or something.
Okay, that's good. I haven't heard any background noise, but thank you for saying that. Okay. Brian, what else do we have for us?
Hey, we'll be on to the business at hand, which is going to be, that's item-
10.1?
10.1. Let me see if I can find that one, because it was in a, let's see. The Old Mill. Let's see here. Bear with me. Okay, that's 10.1. That's the Old Mill Lot 3 Disc Golf Course proposal. The action requested is a motion from the floor to approve the continued development of the Old Mill Disc Golf Course. There were two exhibits in your council packet. One was the initial proposal and an updated OIP map. There was some background there on the issue. It talks about how we were able to authorize them TRT funds, RTMP. And also that I know there's some concern about maintenance of Lot 3 and the division of responsibilities between the city and the Disc Golf Club. So I'm going to ask the Parks and Community Services Committee to kind of get together with the golf club and delineate the shared responsibilities of maintaining the park and what gets mowed by the city and what gets maintained by the Disc Golf Course. And how do we also incorporate the other recreational aspects that might be going on in the park besides Disc Golf? And this, we wanted to update the council, and Jason is online, and I'll let him speak in a minute. There's no financial impact, other than what's already been allocated. You can, options are to direct a modification to Jason's plan or approve to continue development as planned. We're recommending two. The staff does. And there's a motion before you. So Jason, what I'll do is turn it over to you if you have any comments, and then ask any questions of Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Can everyone hear me? All right, awesome. So, hey, Brian, do you have that map by any chance?
Yeah, let me scroll down there. I got it. This is the first one. Let me get the new one.
Yeah, there we go. It's a little bigger. Cool. So I know there were some questions and concerns earlier that I've listened to about the name of the actual park. So when I proposed this originally, we called it the Old Mill Disc Golf Course. So that could be the name of the park, potentially, is the Old Mill Park or the Old Mill Disc Golf Course. And that would be really, you know, that's kind of paying homage to the tradition of what it was at one point. And I know during the Parks Master Plan, when they made the original Parks Master Plan, it was called the Mill Park. That was the entire name of the park. So, yeah, I just wanted to speak on that really quick. And yeah, so as you can see, that's the layout of the Disc Golf Course right there, the holes. So the yellow are the T-signs, the red is the flight paths and the ends of the flight paths are where the baskets are. And I added some new things to this map under Brian's request and for the city council to see. For one, you got the, let's start on the very, I guess, northeast there off of Fish Hatchery. We have the parking area, which we do use on club days, which is usually Sunday, right, it's Sunday at 10:00 a.m. If you ever want to join us, check it out. But I was given a key by the city to use that area to open up the green gate right there and allow our club members to park back there. And we do it, and it's great, and it's amazing. And I would like to see that, basically, one of the, I guess, progress of the Disc Golf Course here would be to move the gate that is right there and put it more directly in front of the trail where so you can see a little icon that says gate right there. So then that way, our parking area could be kind of free and clear for whoever wants to park there, not just somebody with a key and then can actually access the Disc Golf Course that way. And that way, it relieves the parking issues that have been occurring on Roying Rapids and Coho. We only have room for like three or four cars there. And when we have club days and people from Eugene and wherever else, or not even club days, there's a lot of people that want to check this course out, and it's becoming pretty popular. They, a lot of them park on Roying Rapids and Coho, which is not that bad. It's a city street. You know, you should be allowed to park along the street. But there is a neighbor there that's a little concerned, and I want to address her concerns and allow people to park in the parking area that was originally proposed anyway, which was over off of Fish Hatchery Road. So that is the number one right there that I would like to either get a vote on or to progress with or, you know, something of that nature. So yeah, all right. And then down the trail there, which is, when you guys mentioned the levy at first, I thought, oh boy, it's going to be about the South Levy Trail, but it wasn't. It was about another monitor. So there's the levy trail. As you walk down the levy trail from the gate at the new parking location, you pass by the, you pass under the trussel, which is amazing, and then you go along the ponds there. And then you get to hole number one, which is where we're going to have our kiosk. And our kiosk is going to be- And our kiosk is going to be, it's already been kind of, I don't know if it's been officially granted to us. I've heard different things, but it's going to be a saw blade from the, where the, I guess it's the old sawdust retaining building, the big yellow building. There's one thing in that building and it's a big saw blade from the Old Mill. And that's what we're going to use for our kiosk. And that's where we'll put our course map and rules of the park and information, sponsorships, stuff like that. So that's the kiosk right there. And then as you go through the park, which is a little further down, Brian, if you can kind of scroll, there is, there is a little project we got going. And it's more of a wall barrier, but it's also a, can be a piece of artwork, which is going to be a mural that is going to be dedicated to the, the mill, basically. And it's going to be kind of, kind of a trip through history of Oak Ridge. Marissa Lopez has agreed to do this mural for us. And we're paying for it and it would be an amazing tribute to this land. It would basically depict a kind of appropriate, maybe Native American times, then go to the conservation camp times in the 30s with the FDR's New Deal programs. And then go to the Pope and Tell that, that days, the mill. And then kind of maybe at the very end have somebody kind of throw in a disc to represent the Disc Golf Course. So that would also probably be a, something that would be maybe a little discussion here. And other than that, I think that's about it as far as new things or as far as, you know, the progression of the park. Everything has been, we now have baskets, tee pads. You know, we cleaned up the course pretty dang well out there. People have, I've gotten a lot of positive comments. Let's just say that. We've made a, we're starting to make signage just to kind of let people know where the next tee is and various other things. And yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's pretty much it. We made some nice trails in the forest there on holes 14, 15, and 16 that the public can enjoy. And basically, you know, this is a Disc Golf Course, but honestly, it's also, it's just, it's, it's a, it's a city park. It's a public city park. It's a multi-use trail system, which is going to be pretty amazing. It already is. And once we get our actual tee signs in, then they'll let people know where they can go and, and also have a historical depiction of what the the Old Mill was like. So every hole is going to have an historical interpretation of the old land. And that is about it.
Thank you, Jason. I appreciate that. So just to give a little background on, on maybe why this is, is coming up to us right now, we looked, we've looked at it as a council once and agreed that the Parks Committee was going to, and I say Parks Committee, and that's not the full name for it, but you know what I mean.
Committee and community. Yeah, yeah.
There you go. Was going to work with you to determine rules. But one of the reasons why this brought up is it's important that we remember that the Disc Golf Course is on the city park. These are two separate things. We have a city park and we have a Disc Golf Course. And Jason and I had a conversation about this because it's important the city approves anything that happens to this because the city ultimately will be liable as well as set out some ground rules that say this specifically is what the city will do. This is specifically what the club is willing to take on, recognizing that they are a group of volunteers and, and have so much energy and enthusiasm for this. It's almost exhausting. But anyway, that's a good thing. So that's kind of where this was brought up. I had the chance to see some of the drawings and renderings that Marissa was going to be doing for the mural. I had some initial questions. Anytime we do anything that depicts, depicts any of our, our Native American people, we need to make sure that we are reflecting accurately what that is and that many times we asked the First Nations to, to weigh in on that. And we have a tribal representative that works for the Forest Service. In this case, after Marissa showed me what it was, it's not actually a depiction of, of anything. In fact, it's a recreation of a depiction that is already in the area. And Jason, I'm alluding what it was called. Anyway, so she's using that and so that shouldn't be an issue, but it's something that council needs to keep in mind that, you know, we have an obligation not only to our community, but to, to be sensitive to others who have lived here before us. So anyway, that's kind of why we're kind of going through this again to also make sure that there is an understanding between the club and the city that, that anything that has changed, anything they decide to do really does need to be approved by the city before they move forward so that we are not only aware of it without micromanaging, but mostly says that we can be sure we consider any liability or other, other issues that might come up. So council, if you have any questions of Jason or Brian, please go for it.
This is Councilor Whitney. I actually have a few things. Where to start? So the Fish Hatchery, they use the ponds and part of that tree area for sediment, for their filtering of the water that comes out of the hatchery. And filtering out all this stuff there. We need to make sure this does not impact them in any way. And there was also discussions about the parking area with them as well. So I think we, as a council and as a city, need to look into that deeper and make sure we're not going to have any conflicts with the Fish Hatchery. And so that's probably something that Brian would need to do. And then my, and I know that that parking area was closed off for a reason at one point, and I can't remember why. But my other concern is the, the kiosk, I understand why you have it there. My concern is that it is very far away from where anybody driving by can see it. And vandalism is the first thing that's coming to mind for me on where its location is at and what that might mean. And then if you wouldn't mind scrolling down a little bit, Brian. There, like where, um, not quite where the T6 is with the yellow, with the yellow square box, just north of that, as you start, there used to be a ramp that the mill site used to have there for their workers because down below is where all the workers used to park at the mill. And then they would go up that ramp and there was a little shack where they would clock in. When we did the development of all the plans that, for the mill pond and the trail system, that ramp was included in part of that trail system of adding that back in and trying to include that. And seeing where you have some of your Disc Golf Course laid out is a conflict with that. So I think that may be an issue.
Okay, I can speak to that, Bobby, really quick. It's, we opened it up, T8 it is. That is, that is going to be called Dev's ramp. Yes. And basically, if you look at other city parks and what they've done with Disc Golf Courses with multi-use trail systems and everything, a lot of trails do have Disc Golf holes within them. I can think of, well, Dexter State Park. Well, that's a state park, but Adair County Park, Dallas, the city of Dallas has a city park that has a Disc Golf Course in it and a lot of the trails are incorporated with Disc Golf holes. It's basically a relationship building activity where Disc Golfers look out for hikers and hikers look out for Disc Golfers and, and it should be, it should be pretty, pretty okay.
I don't know. So my other concern is where the parking is located. I just, I don't know if it's, I don't know. It just doesn't feel the, I don't know. It just doesn't feel good to me. And then my question also is, who exactly developed this? Because I,
It was Rick, myself. Or you mean the Disc Golf Club or the, like between?
The course.
The course. Yeah. Well, it was, it was the club, which is, involves me as the president. I take full responsibility developing the course.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just not, I don't know. I just have some concerns.
So Bobby, I, I have, I share some of your concerns. And I can answer some of the, the gates were put up in that city-owned area and we own those lots there alongside Fish Hatchery Road. And we put the gates up there because it was prevention from transient parking or camping, that type of thing. Because there were no facilities there, we wanted to prevent camping or people just pulling in there to sleep or whatever. So that's why they put up initially. So I, I think, you know, I think turning this over and sending our concerns over to the park committee and making sure that they work through those as they, as they create standards for the Disc Golf partnership with the club and the city is important. I did want to ask you about the, you know, the ramp that she's talking about, the T8. I think what Bobby's asking is, is that compromising the, the ramp and its location, although I know it doesn't exist anymore. I think it's just the location, I believe. But will that in any way compromise it should we want to develop that?
The short answer is no.
Okay, all right. And Jason, I just want to reiterate, this is not the first golf course that you have designed.
No.
Do this professionally.
Yes, I've done about four courses. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, I think you're extremely creative. It's also nice to hear that you have the professional attitude with it too. And so I think all these questions that Bobby has put up and any others that the council have should be just conveyed to our Parks Committee. My other question is what about, the Parks Committee needs to consider what about facilities? And what type of bathroom facilities may be necessary as a park where we would put them and where they could be easily accessed? So that'd be the other thing. Brian, I believe that you intend to, to task the committee with developing a maintenance agreement. And we trust that you will convey all of these questions that we have, council. Do you have any other questions that we want to make sure that are, are massaged and given to the committee? Counselor Kenyon, I see your hand.
I wonder, could we scroll up to the beginning of this proposal? I forget what it's called. Sorry. By the way, is that like four pages of text? So I'm wondering, the first thing I'm wondering is, is this document new? Is this something that Jason just created to share with us about, you know, the whole plan?
No, Dawn, this is, this has been created, what was it, six months ago?
February.
Well, so I actually went through just today the, the packet that we got in February and it shows the whole entire Parks Plan, but it didn't, it didn't show this document. So I don't.
Yeah, it may very well exist, counselor. I just, given the timeframe, I didn't have enough time to do the search for any more documentation. I only had a couple hours, so.
Yeah. So I guess what I was wondering is a couple of things. Is this, is this like a contract between the Disc Golf Course and the city? Or is this just?
This was just, this was just the proposal, Dawn, that initially got approved.
Right. So city council initially just gave them permission to move forward as we got the coding or the coding, the, the change of into parks and zoning and to parks and open spaces. And that's what I think we need to look at now as far as the Parks Committee to craft a memo of understanding between the city and the, the club as to who will, who will maintain what. And and then that will be brought to us so that we can, we can either massage it or approve it as it is and we'll have an understanding. I, I want to make sure that, and as I know all of the council does, wants to make sure that this is such a really positive thing for our community, but we want to also make sure that it can be maintained appropriately now and into the future. And not cause, and not go into disrepair because, you know, in five years, nobody wants to play Disc Golf. I don't believe that'll happen because there is a proven track record of the growth of Disc Golf as well as its stability. So that's, I think that's what Jason initially presented to us.
A hundred percent.
Okay, I guess I just didn't remember that we had seen that before and I couldn't find it. So I was going to suggest for changes, but if it's not a contract, I guess it doesn't matter. What is important to me though is to know that if the, I know that there's a board and there's a club. But are you guys maintaining minutes and a budget and is that kind of stuff readily available? You know?
Yes.
I'm losing connection. Can you guys hear?
Yes. We heard you.
And yes, Dawn, thank you for asking those questions. And yes, we do have a board that is an official board. We do minutes, we have secretary or treasurer or the president, vice president. And yes, we, we keep records, our treasurer keeps really good records. Secretary is as well. I have all the minutes for all the meetings.
Are you a 501(c)(3)?
No.
Okay.
Haven't drawn that, haven't drawn that route yet.
Okay, just asking. Thank you, Counselor Kenyon. Any other questions from any other counselors?
Yes, does Elkhog, oh, go ahead. I'll let you go first.
Uh, no, go ahead, Bobby.
Oh. Does Elkhog have anybody we can contract with to look at park designs? And I, and it's nothing about the design that Jason has done because I know he does great work, but I'm just somebody that could come in behind and look at how it's structured and, and not where the Disc Golf pieces are, but, well, kind of, but like look at the parking and look at the kiosk and really look at how that is accessible to just the regular citizen that doesn't do a lot of Disc golfing and how they know where to go and what to do and, and making sure everything is in a place that is not going to be destroyed, destroyed or vandalized. I'm just kind of looking for another set of eyes that's separate from us that all have vested interests in this, that can really look at it from a viewpoint.
I think that's a good point. That's a good point. I think one of the things that tasking our Parks Committee was doing will be looking at that. And if they would like to reach out to other Disc Golf, either clubs or Disc Golf organizations to get input, I certainly think that's part and parcel of, of the committee's review process. I do know that other professionals have come to play the course and are, and are really excited about it. But of course, they're not looking at the details of, of what it takes to maintain a park. So I would expect that committee to reach out to communities that have Disc Golf Courses and ask them, what are some of the challenges that you have?
That's not, that wasn't my question.
Okay, well, it sounds like, like you would like to have another expert come in and review the plan. But I do believe they've already started on the, the course. And so my concern is that, that they would be going backwards. But I also think the committee should be.
Yeah, well, they were only supposed to do a few tees, not all of them. If I remember correctly.
I think the original proposal was for a full golf course.
Yeah, but I recall us saying when we do a few tees, we're doing the rezoning. Let's revisit this later. That is my recollection. But I'm not asking for us to go to another Disc Golf Course organization. I'm asking for us to go to an entity that works on just on parks and, and something that is separate from us, something that's separate from the Disc Golf Course stuff, somebody that can come in with a different view and look at it. And making sure we're really setting this up in the best way possible to help it be successful. And to keep things going and to keep things from being vandalized, to keep people from, you know, destroying part of what so many people have put so much time and effort into. So that is something I would like to do. And then of course, we really do need to talk to the Fish Hatchery and figure out that piece of make sure we're not doing anything that impacts the work that they do. Because I know they've used that, a lot of that area to filter their water with all the, the poo and stuff that comes from the fish. So, you know, the sediment filtering. So I think we really need to do some of those things before we keep moving forward. So I think we really need to do some of those things before we keep moving forward so that we're not moving backwards and having to root something out because.
Well, let's ask the question. Have we, has the fish hatchery been consulted? Cause I believe they have been, but I may be mistaken. Brian, do you know if, if we have reached out to the fish hatchery or has the disc golf club reached out?
Uh, I personally have not reached out and Rick never relayed to me that he had reached out, but he, I'll, I'll kick it to Jason to see if, if they did that.
Yeah. So I know, I know that, I know that Rick reached out. And I know that they actually reached out to us when we were doing the, um, the plans for the, the trail system. And having concerns at that time and that they had a contract of sorts and that there were some things that was looked at and discussed regarding that contract and, um, what that means. So I think really the city, it's not Jason that has the responsibility to reach out to them. Cause he really has no ability to make any decisions with them. That's not his place. So I think the city needs to reach out to them and find out how that contract ended up. Um, and make sure we're not doing anything that violates that or puts us in a difficult position.
I, I agree with you. And I think it's the charge of the committee to make sure that that is all done. And, um, you know, and I appreciate, and also to look back at what the parks committee has already done as far as the trails and the, um, the plan that we put together with the National Forest Service, I think it was, or National Park Service. And to see what that input was, because I know that the fish hatchery had input at that time. I do know that the land that was, that is on the other side of the creek is the city's own. Um, although there are right of ways and there are for, um, for fish hatchery. And there are some rules about how, you know, about building too close to the, the waterway, um, that the fish hatchery, um, reminded them about as they were doing the trail plan. So, um, so Bobby, all of your questions are, are really good. All of your points are really good. And, and I will reiterate, I think we need to charge the, and task the committee to look at all of that and bring back, um, the results of, of what they've found out. I think I sense what you're saying is that you would like, uh, everything to go on hold at the disc golf course until we find out those questions. I, uh, I'm, I'm asking that question of you as far as is that the direction you're going?
I think that, um, cleaning things up is fine, but I think a lot of the really detailed stuff and, um, making a lot of new baskets needs to be on hold for a little while. Um, and truly I don't feel that it's the committee's responsibility to contact the, the fish hatchery and find out contractual stuff. I don't think that is the scope of the committee. I don't think it's our job to figure out contracts.
I'll take that as a tasker. That's fine.
Yes, I believe the city administrator can do that and, and report to the, the committee about it and report to us also. I do believe that quite a few of these baskets are already in. I think, um, the cat is out of the bag in that respect. Um, and so, uh, I just want you to be aware of that. I don't want you to be surprised if you go down there. Because.
Is the zoning completely finalized?
Yes. I believe so. Brian?
Just waiting on the final thing from DL's DC, but it's, it's, uh, pretty much a 99% complete and don't expect any changes.
Right.
So, cause I also remember us in a council meeting saying that we didn't want too much to happen until that was completely finalized. So.
Right. And we did, once we got that point where we were at the point where it was like 90%, we're just waiting for the final thing. We said, go ahead. We said, okay.
So, but it's still not final. Okay.
It's not final as it can be.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Kenyon?
Um, I just wanted to make a point that I don't think it's possible to make this park any more vandal proof than any other park. Vandals are vandals and they are opportunists. If they see something they want to make a mess of and do it. There's nothing in that we could put on paper that would stop that from happening. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor Kenyon.
I have a couple things to.
Counselor Hollitt, go ahead.
Um, I, I do have to say, I feel a little bit of concern about this, uh, topic. You know, I definitely do not have as much experience with the parks and recreation as Counselor Whitney does. However, just as being a city councillor, I feel, you know, we have really put a lot of time, funds and really put a lot of kind of investment in this program, in this, um, disc golf course. And, um, I feel like I understood the zoning stuff when we approved it a while ago. And I'm not arguing, but I'm just saying, I don't remember us putting anything on hold. I thought we moved through that and we were, um, my other thing I want to, um, bring up is the backstop. The way that I understand is that mural, it's a backstop. So they need to put that backstop up no matter what. It needs to go up. So it's more of a, um, it's kind of a utilitarian thing. And they are putting the mural on the backside of it to put art on a blank space. I personally love the concept. I love the idea. I think it's great that they're kind of wrapping up, um, a little bit of Oak Ridge's history in putting that there. Um, I absolutely understand Mayor Holston's, um, concern with the Native American, um, issue on that. I had no idea that was an issue, but I, I understand that. So I think checking that is important, but as far as a mural being vandalized, if I don't, I'm sure everybody's driven by it. But in front of the fire department, there is a fire mural that has been there. It's under a kiosk. It's been there for well before my time. So I, I know for sure 15 to 20 years it's been there. It has never been vandalized and we have a lot of, um, people that hang out under it. And it simply has a nice, um, plexiglass kind of adhered or fastened to the front of it. So I think that could be something that if they move ahead with the mural, they could do something, you know, very simply similar to that as putting that on the front so that the actual mural doesn't get damaged and it should be pretty cost effective. Um, I just hope that any of this discussion tonight, that we don't, um, lose momentum from their group. I really have been excited watching them and doing all this. And I think there's been a lot of positive, um, discussions in the community. And it's just been one of the really positive things that have happened over this last year. So while I do understand putting some things kind of on puzzle or maybe slowing some things down. I just also, I hope we're all really conscientious about that positive momentum they have. I think that's all I have to say.
Kathy, you're not muted. I mean, you're muted. Thank you, Counselor Kenyon. Um, I'm going to let Counselor McCallum go first, um, because he hasn't spoken on this.
I was pushing my button in, unmuted myself. So I, I actually live relatively close to this. And I would point out that the aerial photo is old because actually there is a house built right here on the corner of, um, Okeechobee and Roaring Rapids. And they can actually see out towards that, that mural area. I've walked that in, and I see the ramp thing that, um, Counselor Whitney was talking about, and that H T does not impact that in any way. You can still walk up that whole ramp area. Uh, I, I would point out that the, the citizen at that corner house has expressed some level of concern about the amount of parking that takes place. And, and when I have walked down there, um, that there are some cars parked, but what, the, the, the part that they're doing is, is they're parking perpendicular and up parallel to the street. And so, um, they don't really hang out badly, but they are not, you know, as tight as they could be. And, and she's expressed some concern about that. Um, and with the, and, and, and brought up the question, would we put some sort of signage to, uh, possibly mitigate the amount of parking that takes place there? Um, and, and I explained to her that the parking lot on the other side was, uh, a work in progress and that ideally, um, everybody would be parking on the other side and entering the golf course the same direction, but, um, without signage, there's no way to, to do that. So.
Yeah. Counselor Kenyon, you had to comment, I believe.
Uh, now I have to remember what it was. Um, oh, um, I wonder if there was any confusion between, uh, when you were saying direct it to the committee. You meant the Parks and Community Services Committee, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, because I wondered from something that Bobby said, if she thought that you meant the disc golf club should be addressing those things.
We'd have to ask Counselor Whitney.
Yeah, I guess I am asking Counselor Whitney.
I guess I'm not really understanding what you're asking.
Um, Counselor Whitney, were you concerned that Kathy wanted the disc golf club to talk to the forest or the, um, fish hatchery regarding the issues that you brought up?
Um, yes, because I don't think that's their place to do that.
Right. So I wanted to clarify that Kathy and she'll, um, she's already said. So Kathy was talking about your committee, the Parks and, uh, Community Services Committee that should be taking that on.
Yeah, I heard that also, um, but I still don't think that is the committee's responsibility to go talk to the fish hatchery about contracts or, or agreements that they've had or anything that can have to do with legal stuff. I just don't believe that's our place to do that. I think it would really muddy the waters and that it should, um, come from the city to really keep it clear and clean.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. And I believe the city administrator decided to go ahead and do that and then report to the committee. Um, as well as then obviously is report back to us. Um, we do need to move on. Um, we have other things that we need to accomplish today. And so the basic question before you, uh, is do we go ahead and give, um, give our blessing for them to continue with what they're doing? Or do we, um, do we alter what the, uh, the motion is here? So we have two options here to, um, direct modifications to the plan or to approve the continued development as planned. I believe it stated in the issues that, um, it is the intention of the city administrator to task the Parks and Community Service Committee with developing a maintenance agreement between the city and the old Mill Disc Golf Club and delineate the shared responsibilities. I would also add that we have a list of questions here that we definitely want the, um, committee to, um, to take on and, uh, look at as they begin to craft that memo of understanding, um, with the disc golf club. Counsel, uh, Counselor Kenyon, I see your hand up. Can you, do you have something to say briefly?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, no, I'm looking, I'm.
Oh, okay. No problem. No problem. That's, no, that's fine. Um, so I asked the council, do you have a motion?
I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead, please, Counselor Kenyon.
Is there any chance we could blow this up a little? Thank you. So helpful. Okay. I move the old Mill Disc Golf Club proceed with further development of the course in close coordination with the staff. With the option that I would like to make sure that they add the, um, what is it called? The negotiated agreement between what the city is going to do and what the club's going to do.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So proceed with the further development of the course in close coordination with the staff. And, and.
Complete the plan.
And create a memo of understanding.
Correct.
Addressing maintenance, et cetera, issues. Does that sound right?
It sounds perfect.
All right. Awesome. Do I hear a second?
Counselor Hollitt will second.
Thank you, Counselor Hollitt. Uh, if there, is there any further discussion?
Um, I would like to make a friendly amendment to that. Um, I think we should exclude um, any developed, future development on stuff that might conflict with the fish hatchery until we get further clarification.
Do you accept that amendment, Counselor Kenyon?
Um, can you please repeat it?
Um, I think we should exclude any further development on the part of the property that would conflict with anything that has to do with the fish hatchery.
So in the water?
Um, it's not just the waters, that wooded area too. I know they use that area as well.
Witted area. Okay. Um, I, I would, I would suggest that that is more than a friendly amendment. So be careful. That's, it changes the language.
I don't really.
All right. So that amendment is not accepted and, um, we are up for a vote. Please, uh, call the roll.
Counselor McCollum?
Hi.
Counselor Forcombe?
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon? Mayor Holston?
I.
Counselor Whitney?
Nay.
I.
Counselor Hollitt?
I.
And I got yours, Dawn.
Thank you, counsel. Um, that passes. Let's move on then to, um, where am I here? Uh, Triple Summit Challenge Event Approval. You have, um, the agenda bill in your packet. This is 10.2. Brian, would you go ahead, please?
Okay, uh, they're, uh, planning the event. They had to delay it from, uh, September 25th into the last third weekend in October. But, uh, their desire is to do the start and finish at Green Waters. And as part of that, uh, they rented the park, but as part of that, they wanted to serve, uh, beer to the participants, canned beer or bottled beer. And so that's why it's in front of you because they are looking for, um, permission to serve alcohol. Uh, the, if you look, I, I put on here because they did a really good job at ensuring their event is going to be COVID compliant. And they've really got a good plan here, how they move ahead, which is why I included that. But with regards to the matter at hand, um, your options are to approve the serving of bottled canned beer at the event or don't approve serving of alcohol at the event. Uh, we're recommending approval. Uh, he's, he's got a plan to ensure the minors are not, uh, do not have access. And it's going to be closely controlled by volunteers and only participants will get beer, no one else.
Brian, is this a, um, so they're serving canned beer, but it's not for purchase?
That's correct. It, well, it, it, the reason they're having to get the, uh, I, I told him, I said, you're probably going to need an LCC permit because it's included in the entry package to buy into the event. So I left it up to him. I said, uh, in any case, you're going to need to get it from us, but, uh, it's up to you whether you get it from LCC. And, uh, he's going to deliver the permit to me if he, if he required one.
Okay. So he is going to check to make sure that he does or does not need a permit?
Right. And I asked him to, if he did not need one, to tell me who at LCC told him that and the kind of the name and telephone number. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Um, thank you. Um, counsel, um, can we have a, a motion?
Um, this is Bobby. I move we approve the alcohol permit for Triple Summit Challenge on October 24th to 25th, 2020.
I hear a second?
Okay.
Paul Forcombe seconded, um, and open for discussion. Counsel, Counselor Kenyon, I see your hand.
Yeah, uh, my concern is with the actual event. I forget, but I feel like it's 50 people maximum are allowed to gather. Or maybe it's, maybe it's even been dropped down to 10 are allowed to gather for events. Do we have, I, I read through what they have here and they don't address the quantity of people that are going to be there. Do we have, I read through what they have here and they don't address the quantity of people that are going to be there. So I'd like to know if we have addressed that.
Right here, number fifteen, if you read that, can you see it? There'd be twenty runners per wave every five minutes, so I think that addresses that.
And he, he also is not going to, as they finish after the run, they get their beer and they go. He's not going to have them mingling around. There's no event to be other than a a minor award ceremony for the winner.
So then I would ask if they get their beer and go, what does that exactly mean?
Well, I shouldn't have said it exactly that.
Okay.
You're not going to drink and drive if that's what you're asking.
Okay, that's where I'm going with it. That's where I'm going with it. Um, uh, yeah, so I agree with you, John. I, we want to make sure that they are abiding by um, any of the COVID that would happen. Uh, the rules that would be in place for the time of this event. Um, so I think we just need to make sure that Brian, um, that as the event approaches it for some reason, God forbid, please, that we go back to restricted requirements for gatherings outside, um, that um, we adjust this accordingly. And I will say that Devin has ha- has a really good track record um, with the other events that he's put on like this, and he's done several around um, around the state of Oregon during COVID and has done an excellent job um, uh, keeping everybody distance and um, bringing them through in waves so that they don't, they don't gather. Um, so I feel good about that and has been extremely proactive about um, giving Brian um, a heads up and um, and me first, you know, he is constantly emailing me saying, this is what I'm doing, this is what I'm doing. And then I say, tell Brian. And um, so he's doing a good job with it, um, if that um, holds any weight to. Um, so is there any further discussion? If not, call for a vote, please.
I don't think we have a motion on the table.
Oh, did we not do a motion?
Yeah, you did.
We did, and Paul Forcombe seconded it.
Yep.
Bobby did it.
Yep, thank you.
I, I'd like to uh, ask to make a friendly amendment then.
All right, go ahead, please.
The amendment would be to um, to alter this if the COVID nineteen uh, restrictions change.
So the men, the motion is I move we approve the alcohol permit for the triple summit challenge on October twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. And
Providing we're following the current COVID restrictions.
Providing current COVID restrictions are met. Got it. Um, let's see, who made that motion? Uh, Bobby, do you accept that?
Um, I don't know. So the motion is only for the alcohol permit. It's not for the actual event and um, monitoring everything that happens at the event and stopping the event if not. So I don't know that it applies to that motion.
Do you accept that? Do you accept the amendment?
Um, I don't know. Um, I guess.
Is that a yes or a no?
It's a yes.
Okay. Um, Paul, do you accept that, that as still seconded?
Yeah, and and yes and no, but probably more yes and the no was why
I need a yes or a no? Is that a yes?
Yes or no? Yes.
Very good. Okay, we got it. Jackie. Jackie, do the vote, please.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Forcombe.
Hi.
Counselor Hallid.
I.
Counselor Whitney.
I.
Mayor Holston.
I.
Counselor McClelland.
Hi.
That passes. Thank you, everybody. Let's move on to thirteen point.
Actually, we have uh, the added item of ten point three.
There it is, ten point three, the letter of support.
Right, quickly, this, this is just allow, would allow lame council of governments to obtain a grant to help them, obtain a grant to hire a part-time person to do veterans benefits uh, advisor and connect veterans with organizations which can help them. Uh, so they've asked the city to sign on because it would also help veterans that are in Oak Ridge. Uh, and and the letter you saw, so uh, what we're doing is approving uh, the mayor and I to sign the letter, or you can say no.
Um, do I hear a motion?
Well, this is a little bit of a conflict for me because it's related to my job.
Yes.
But it doesn't impact any funding because I don't do this position and my position isn't funded by this. So it's just a potential conflict of interest. Yeah, and with that said, just to add to what um, Brian mentioned, this position, um, they've had for about a year and a half. And it started out with a grant and then it was um, later just ran off of S and D S funds and the funds really aren't there to keep operating it. But the person that does this, she works with a lot of veterans and um, working with the Lane County VSO office and um, different agencies to help people get benefits or apply for benefits or change their um, their service separation if they separate it under anything other than honorable discharges. She does a lot of good things and we have a lot of veterans in our community and I've referred a lot to her.
Thank you, Counsel Kenyon. Thank you. Um, so we have um, we have a motion and we have seconded it. Um, is there any further discussion? If not, uh, Jackie, please call for a vote.
Um, I don't think there was a motion.
I didn't, we didn't get a motion made?
Unfortunately, I lost the end of the page too, so there is no
Go ahead, Counsel Hallid.
I move that we approve signing the letter of endorsement
for LCOG's Veteran Affairs Grant. Yep.
Sorry, I was just reading what was there.
I get it. And um, who seconded that? Was that Paul or John?
Second.
Paul, okay, Paul seconded it. Thank you. Um, and uh, Jackie, now, please call for a vote.
Counselor McClelland.
Hi.
Mayor Holston.
I.
Counselor Forcombe.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Whitney.
I.
Counselor Hallid.
I.
That passes. Thank you, counsel. Um, and I I thank, thank whoever did that little sweet eye in the background. I don't know where that came from, but that was awfully cute.
Oh, that, that would be my fifteen-year-old son.
Well, that was very sweet. No, no, I liked it. Okay, let's move on. Um,
Can you hear the giggle from the bathroom because he's giggling now?
Uh, Mayor, uh, just a time hack, it's, it's eight fifty-seven. Uh, it's
Oh, jeez. Um, okay, counsel, um, we still have ordinances, resolutions to approve, and we have an executive session to go into. Um, we have postponed the executive session three times, I believe. I think it's the third time we're about to do this, if that's indeed what we do. And we have three remaining resolutions that need to be passed or amended or not passed um, for our committees. Um, how far are you willing to go? Counsel Kenyon, I see a hand up.
I'd like to suggest that we put off the uh, resolutions and move into executive session. I'm willing to go unless you think that's more than a half an hour. I don't know what's on the executive session.
I think uh, the executive session can probably um, conclude in thirty minutes. Um, counsel, how do you feel about that?
Um, Counselor Hallid. I have some pretty restless kids myself and um, I'm going to have a really difficult time staying on. But if we decide to do the executive session, I will do my very best to stay on, but I would agree that the resolutions need to be postponed.
Okay, Counsel Whitney, you also have children. Um, how uh, would another thirty minutes impact you?
Um, I think I'm okay. I have one that's spending the night with somebody and one that's being good. And if she gets up, I can go with that.
Okay, so um, let's go ahead and um, postpone um, section twelve, one, two, three, and four and um, move. Uh, we still have an appointment that I'm, we're going to do really quickly here as Parks and Community Services. Um, Jason Neemer has applied for the position um, after it has been posted. I believe he is the only application for that. Um, and uh, let's, let's move through this so that we can fill it if possible. Um, as you know, we have uh, six citizens. Currently, there are five leaving one vacancy. Um, and so we would like to appoint that vacancy. Um, we can choose to appoint, we can choose not to appoint. Um, and we will have the opportunity to ask questions of Jason. Counsel, uh, do you want to ask any questions of Jason? All right, I have only one question of Jason, if he is still there.
I am still here.
Thank you, Jason. Jason, as we have just seen, you are part of the Disc Golf Club. You do understand that in instances where you'll be discussing the Disc Golf Club that you will have to abstain from voting? Are you willing to do that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And you are familiar with that process?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Um, does anyone want to make a motion?
Um, I will. Um, I move that we appoint Jason Neemer to serve in the vacant Oak Ridge Parks and Community Services Advisory position for a three-year term.
I second that.
Counsel Kenyon seconds it, uh, with no other discussion. Jackie, will you call for a vote?
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Forcombe.
Hi.
Counselor Hallid. Counselor Whitney.
I.
Mayor Holston.
I.
Counselor McClelland.
Hi.
That passes.
Counselor Hallid.
Whoops.
I.
There she is. My, my apologies. Um, that passes. Thank you, Jason. Thank you for being willing to um, to serve on this committee. I'm sorry to rush you through it. Um, good job. Aye, aye. Okay.
It's, it's an honor. Thank you.
You're welcome. It is an honor for us to have you too. Um, okay, let's move into um, we are, hold on, let me get my right piece of paper here. Um, executive session, there it is. We are going to move into executive session at this time for ORS one nine two point six six zero two one to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the chief executive officer of any public body, a public officer, employee, or staff member who does not request an open hearing. Um, it is the desire of the council to meet as a council first and then invite the city administrator in, although he has the right to be present for all of our discussions. Um, uh, Brian, how would you choose? Would you like to be present for all of it, or are you okay with us inviting you in later?
Um, either way, I'm going to be here having to run the Zoom.
So let's just say that Brian's going to be there.
Um, so yeah, so if you would